See is that you under construct admin?
Hello Ed.
Hello.
Eric.
Hello, everybody. How we doing?
Good.
Good.
I will call the meeting to. Dan, do you have a process question? Dan, go ahead.
I'd like to record it if that's okay.
That's fine, Dan.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL chapter 38, section 18. And the governor's June 16th, 2021 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Great Barrington Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, general guidelines, remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right. And our requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL 7C 38, session 20F. After notifying the care of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body. Or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, by the Town of Great Barrington, by other members of the public. By the Burser Edge, Burser Eagle, Nan Wild, and there may be other people recording and have permission. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may be in fact discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Okay, we will start with the. Approval of minutes. There are four sets of minutes. Do I have a motion?
Steve, can I just?
Yes.
I wasn't involved with the February minutes, the 8th and the 22nd, so.
Okay, so let's do the February, let's do the February 1st, and then we'll do the November ones.
I make a motion to approve the February 1st minute.
No, it's February 8th and 22nd, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve the February 8th and 22nd minutes.
Do you have a second? Ed seconded, he was muted, but I saw it. So we have motion, my Lee is seconded by Ed. Any discussion? All votes are roll call. Garfield has just joined us. Garfield?
Hi.
Eric's abstaining. Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I. It's unanimous with one abstention. Next, November minutes?
I make a motion to approve November 8th minutes and November 22nd minutes.
Second.
A roll call. Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Select boards announcements and statements. Garfield?
Nothing, thank you.
Eric?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Ed?
No.
Lee?
Yes, I have a short statement I'd like to make, please.
Yes.
The proposed short rental bylaw statement, or the proposed short rental bylaw, which we'll be discussing tonight, has evolved over several months. It is not a one-size-fits-all solution to our affordable housing crisis. What it is, is one piece of a multifaceted puzzle that preserves balance in our community so that people who work here can afford to live here. And people wanting to find homes or remain in them can do so. This bylaw also addresses impacts in the assessed values of residents' homes triggered by the upsurge in investment properties and subsequent improvements made to them. According to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, there are 200 short-term rentals in Great Barrington. Yet, there are zero properties available for long-term rent. Fifty-six short-term rentals are owned by investors. These 56 properties could be homes for families wishing to move here, seniors wishing to downsize or move closer to their children. Apartments for essential workers or starter homes for young couples. Reducing demand from speculators is key. The primary residency requirement in this proposed bylaw is designed to deter speculators from purchasing housing for profit that may otherwise be available to residents. By decreasing demand from speculators, we can increase housing for residents and bring prices back down to reasonable levels that restore balance to this community. I thank the board for their attention to this matter, and I look forward to continuing to work on a myriad of solutions to our housing crisis. I also want to thank members of the Housing Subcommittee and the Planning Board, and thank all the citizens who have shared their stories and offered their comments.
Thank you very much, Lee. I have nothing. Mark, Town Manager, it's time.
There we go. Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
I just wanted to mention one thing tonight. It's not on the agenda, but. Like, it did come to our attention recently, late last week. An issue related to the water system of Heston, so I just wanted to say that to everyone out there that we did receive a copy of the letter that was sent to village residents related to halo acidic acid in the water system. And we're gathering information now, and our Health Department is working with officials, working closely with officials at DEP. And specifically, the drinking water program there. And as soon as we have some more information to share with everyone, we will do so, whether it's through a press release or our social media. Sites, or at the very least, at our next meeting. So, please bear with us, we are gathering information. And I also just wanted to say one more thing related to this topic, and that's that we did not have any advance notice of this, we didn't withhold any information. We found out that there was an issue, just like every other customer, by receiving the letter late last week, so. That's all I have. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Under previous business, the Housatonic School request for proposals, timeline and process. Chris?
Good evening, everybody. Chris Remble speaking. Mark, okay, go ahead. Well, in your packet tonight, you have a revised RFP. That hopefully includes what we discussed last time. The comments that you wanted included, or that we agreed to, or some of the points that, that, that you made. It includes a 90-day timeline turnaround, which can be amended further if the select board wants. It includes some statements regarding the existing CPA funds dedicated to the building, and the select board's release of those funds would only be to a, to a development team that you feel comfortable with, and pending the terms of development agreement. So hopefully that addresses that. There was some discussion also about, you know, the fact that you wanted to honor the work that the Heston improvement committee did. But you also wanted to be sure to invite creative proposals of any kind. So hopefully the draft does those things. And. Yeah, happy to discuss any of these points.
The select board.
Would you like a copy of that shared on the screen?
Well, let's ask the select board, do we have some questions or comments, or are we satisfied?
Yeah, I think you did a remarkable job capturing our comments, so thank you. I like it as is.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I think, Chris, you guys did a great job with this RFP. I just had one, one small thing, and it's nothing major. What page am I on here? Under the Select Board welcomes creative development schemes to meet the objectives. Possible uses may include. Just throughout the thing, when we're suggesting what we would like to see, we always start with residential apartments for multi-family housing. Right down with the bullet points here. If it doesn't matter to everybody else, I would like just to shuffle those up a little bit. And, and even if we could put something like the vocational training programs or the educational program on the top, and then residential just under. I don't know if that's offensive or anything to anybody, but it was this one minor thing that I was hoping we can just reshuffle that, those bullet points.
I have no problem with that.
You know, fine.
Lee?
Yes, thanks, Chris. This is wonderful. Thank you for taking in all the comments. I had mentioned at the last meeting about marketing and some work on the materials, and we're just wondering if there's any follow-up or we have any ideas how we could maybe create a packet that addresses Great Barrington and sells it from the point of view of the town and what we have to offer.
Definitely working on that. Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, and Chris, feel free to add to what I have to say here, but we met this afternoon to touch on marketing. We do anticipate using Ellen to help us with this. Chris is intending to reach out to be our PC and work through Laura Brennan and use, potentially utilize some of our economic development funding to advertise. So we will try to cast as wide a net as possible here, and we're open to any ideas that you have as well.
Yeah, we're developing kind of a slide deck that will highlight some of the the desirable aspects of the town as a whole, but also the village specifically. You know, certainly showcase the sketch floor plans that came out of the shred, things like that. So, we're putting that together, we would issue that with the RFP and put it on our website. You know, so the advertisements would direct people not only to the RFP, but to that slide deck. Again, whatever photos you may have of the building in use, or I seem to only have photos in the winter. Any beautiful photos, and photos from within the building? You know, there's fantastic views that can be showcased. So if you have anything, please share them with me. I guess this call goes to the Houston Improvement Committee too, if you're listening tonight, you may have photos, so whatever you have, send them over. And we can include in a promotional program piece.
Thank you. Yes, Lee.
Yes, it's just a follow-up question. Obviously, there's, there's a site specifically for RFPs from municipalities, but I was just wondering, you know, thinking from a point of view of a real estate broker, are there other opportunities to to seek input or spread the net wider as if we were, you know, trying to sell it or working with, with a broker? I'm just really. You know, thinking about just making sure that the people that might respond to this hear about it, so. And I'm wondering if we've learned any lessons from the other RFPs that we can maybe cast the, the net wider this time.
Yeah, I think I'm encouraged that working with our folks, our economic development planners at British Regional Planning Commission, they have lists of firms, be they developers, housing firms, business firms, architects, and people who do this kind of stuff. So they have a whole network. We have a shortlist too of people who are interested. Who've called over the years, so we'll make sure that they get a solicitation directly. So I think we're, we're going to, we definitely have learned that lesson, we'll cast the net as far out as we can. We'll investigate other advertising possibilities. You know. We'll see what the budget can do.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the RFP with the one slight change that Eric has suggested?
I make a motion to approve the RFP with the edit that Eric has requested.
Second.
Any discussion?
So just to clarify, the vocational training vote will be first, residential second.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none from the select board. Roll call vote, Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I. Thank you very much.
We will issue it according to those guidelines. We'll get Town Council final approval on it, and then we'll issue it according to that timeline that you have there.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda tonight is the short-term rental bylaw. Our objective is tonight is hopefully some sort of a general agreement or a majority agreement on the key points. And we're not planning to wordsmith tonight. We'll come back at our next meeting with, as we did with the Housatonic School with, with more concrete terms. There's been a lot of public comment. In order to get this done tonight, there, we won't be taking, we'll be taking very minimal public comment. There will be comment during citizen speak. We're not approving this tonight, so there will be other times for public comment. And Chris and Mark are going to lead us through this, and what I'm hoping is that the key points tonight, we can come to some sort of agreement on Chris's outline, some of those, and we'll work through those. Eric, I know you're accusing yourself, so I will. Let's see, remove you from panelist if I can figure out how to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mark, if you can figure out, oh, there you go, thank you.
Can, okay, process question?
Yes.
You know, when we scheduled this meeting, it was to review what the planning board sent back to us, and then there was another, Lee's new proposal in the packet. There's one I would like us to consider, which was the one that Stockbridge passed. I've sent it to Mark and Chris, so they've got it. Is it possible to do that at the same time?
It's, it's anything is possible.
Okay.
Nothing is impossible.
We have all three versions here this evening, so we're just waiting for some direction from the board, and we're happy to start anywhere you'd like to.
Do we want to start with a, what Chris has outlined to us is the major differences between the planning boards and the select boards versions. So do we want to start with the select boards and incorporate the planning boards?
This is where I would say we don't have a select board version, right? There are three versions now. Start with what it is we're trying to accomplish, and what are, how we're going to make that decision. But as we sent something to the planning board, they sent it back. At that time, I there was questions about what, what this thing is trying to accomplish. The planning board changed some of the things that, because they didn't think that it would accomplish that. Some of the things Lee just mentioned in her introduction are not what's written for what it's trying to accomplish in the, you know, again, the subject of affordable housing came up, which is not listed in the purpose. So I would love for us to, as specifically as we can, say, what are we trying to accomplish here? Because I think we have a lot more chance of accomplishing it, if we know what we're doing.
The, the first part of it that we would talk about is the purpose, and that's what you're, you're asking for, correct, Ed?
I suppose, yeah, we can agree on a purpose.
Yeah, I think, I think that's important.
But with some specificity, because ultimately, we're going to have to weigh the pros and the cons of any proposal. So, you know, what we're trying to, I guess what I'm looking for is what are we trying to accomplish? What's the likelihood that it will accomplish that? What are the costs? And then the cost benefit? I don't know if we'll get to all that tonight.
Yeah, that may be a heavy list, but we'll at least get started.
Alright.
I have not seen the Stockbridge version. Was that in the packet or shared, or when did that come up?
No, I didn't know we were entertaining additional ones, so I, I sent that to, it's available now. So, I don't know if we can, you know, that's short notice for some of us. So I, I don't know if we can, you know, that's short notice for some of us or some of you. I've seen it.
Well, I mean, I'd like to suggest that we have the two versions that were in the packet that we had planned on discussing. And to continue with comparing the two rather than throwing another version that no one's seen.
Had I been invited, to have I been invited to submit something to the packet, I would have, I, I thought we were dealing with what the planning board sent. I don't want to go ahead without considering the third one. Unless we come up with something tonight, and then at our next meeting, we compare that to the third one, but I, I don't want the third one not. What we're trying to come up with is something from the select board. So we could postpone this until a next meeting if you want, if we want time to look at all three. There's not, it's no longer a, a zoning bylaw, so it's, there's no hurry anymore. We don't have the same deadline.
But we, we haven't decided on that yet. The select board has not decided that it's not a zoning. I think the planning board has made that recommendation, and I think that's one of the things we should make a decision on. You're absolutely right, Ed. It's, it appears it's not zoning. But again, we have not discussed this at, at a meeting or privately, obviously.
So I would, I would like to consider all three if, I would entirely understand if, you know, that's not enough time to do it tonight.
Well, Ed, could you explain what it is in the Stockbridge version that you are so interested in? That's not in the planning board version or the other version that was in the packet?
I don't know if now's the time. I could go through the whole thing, yeah.
Well, I mean, there must be specific points in this version that you have been drawn to that don't exist in the two packets, in the two versions that were in the packets. I'd like you to.
Yeah, there, there are, and again, if we're, I don't know. I would rather start with what we're trying to accomplish and make sure we agree on that than going through the three. I definitely would do that once we start going through them. I don't know if it's too soon to do that.
Why don't you just talk about the purpose?
Yeah, let's talk about the purpose first.
Of each of the three.
Yeah, let's talk about the purpose of each and then try to come to a purpose that we all can agree on.
Where can I see the Stockbridge version? Because I have not seen it.
I can put it up or Mark, Mark can put it up on screen. Maybe, maybe Ed can tell us what it is about the purpose of that that is good and or better or different than, than the others.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, I, I think it, its purpose is something we can actually accomplish as opposed to, it, it's less vague. They're working on a neighborhood's health and safety, so it's to balance private neighborhood and municipal interests by ensuring compliance with applicable Massachusetts general law regarding short-term rentals and ensure observance of residential health and safety regulations, which is what I thought we ended our last meeting, the, when we sent it to the planning board saying.
Mark, can you get that on the screen? Thank you.
So Ed, can you maybe cross-check your, the purposes in the Stockbridge version against the ones that are in front of us? And because I think you'll find that some of the ones in the Stockbridge version are currently in this version that was included in the packet.
Yeah. It's some of the other ones, the other purposes. Again, I, I think we should start with purposes. Excuse, excuse the dog. It's some of the, it sort of talks about, I'm looking at which one the
Mark, can you put Stockbridge up?
Planning board one. Ensure short-term rentals do not negatively affect, affect property values. Actually, I thought high property values was the problem. So that, you know, and will, will eliminating short-term rentals have anything to do with property values? We don't know that. Protect neighborhoods from undue commercial activity. Isn't all renting commercial activity. You know, is, is short-term rentals different that, you know, that's clearly different than having a general store? So it, it's, that, that's the one from the planning board. The other one that was proposed tonight. Commercial activity in residential neighborhoods. Again, we don't define that. Determining commercial interest from buying housing. This doesn't necessarily stop that. Nor do we even know that that's a thing that's going on. So I like, what I like about the Stockbridge one is it does what it says it's trying to do. It does something that it can do. It's been passed the Attorney General, so it, we know that it's legal without legal fees. I don't know if that helps.
Are you able to see the?
Yes, you know, thank you. You know, we, so we could you'll go through the purposes of all of these. Again, I, I thought the planning board, I thought both groups took promoting year-round rentals off the list because we didn't think this would do that. And I don't see it, I don't see it in your proposal. I did see, hear it in your speech.
So Ed, can you, i- if you don't mind, could we put up the version that was in the packet that I had proposed? And we could go through that because it seems to be more comprehensive than Stock bridges and we can go through the different purposes. And you could let us know what purposes in that version that you are having concerns with.
I thought I just did. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I did the planning board one.
Put it on the screen. Let's get it on the screen first so everyone can see it and we'll go line by line through it.
Can I just point out the Stockbridge version is, is nice in general and in that way workable. But you, you may wish to add more specific purposes.
Well, I'd like to request that we use the one that was in the packet that everyone has looked at over the weekend and go through the purposes in that and discuss whether or not we have concerns because it is comprehensive and it does include an element of registration that was not there.
Now, there were two on the packet, so you're talking about the one.
The newest one, the one that I had proposed.
Didn't we start with the one the planning board sent us? I thought that's why we called this meeting. But it wasn't this to deal with the one that the planning board sent back?
Garfield?
Mark, we can all see the desktop. Sorry, Steve.
No problem. Let's, let's get started on the purposes of the two. The planning boards and the one that was also in our packet. And then we'll work on the Stockbridge one either after that, or if people need more time, we can do it at the next meeting.
Mark, why don't you let me put them up on screen?
Yeah. And Chris, why don't you guide us through this?
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
I don't know if I can do them both at the same time on screen, but we'll see. Can everybody see this? This is from your packet that's in front of you tonight. So that, this is, this is a well-written purpose. I suppose the, the questions for the board are, do you agree with each item? And as we get further down the kind of means and methods of the bylaw, are we accomplishing these, these purposes? Lee, is this something you want to walk through or?
Yeah, so I, I'd like to, I can pick out the points or just describe why, why, where I gain these from. Will be helpful if I read it and Ed, if you want to add your comments and let me know if, if these are ones that you have issues with. I can, I can stop. Is, is that?
Yeah, I already did. It's commercial activity in residential neighborhoods.
Okay, so, so let's, let's start from the beginning. The purpose and intent of this article is to provide a process through which certain residential premises and rooms not otherwise regulated as like, and licensed as lodging houses or bed and breakfasts may be registered with the town of Great Barrington for use as short-term rentals. So are you okay with registration?
There's a reason for it, so keep going. You come up with the reason.
Okay. So does to provide for the orderly operation of short-term rentals. So right now, short-term rentals are, are unregulated.
Right.
So as to provide for the orderly operation of short-term rentals within the town and minimize public and safety healthy risks, health risks. So this is something that the planning board was was focusing on. Further, this article is intended to reduce commercial activity in residential neighborhoods.
So yeah, there, I have a couple of questions there. One, we, we should define commercial activity because again, any rental and anytime somebody rents an apartment, that's commercial activity. But also, this says residential neighborhoods, but nowhere in the body of this do we deal with residential versus commercial or any other neighborhoods. So if it's residential neighborhoods, that'll severely change what we do in here. But I'd like, I'd like to start with what's, you know, what, what are we trying to do here? It sounds like what we're trying to do is get rid of Airbnbs. If you're defining that as commercial activity. If you are, this doesn't do it because it still lets people run an Airbnb in their home. If that's not what you mean, I'm not sure why it's in here because we're dealing with Airbnb or.
Well, you'll notice that the, the word says reduce commercial activity. So these are commercial operations in residential neighborhoods. So you're defining for-profit, for-profit operations.
Like I say, every apartment rental is a for-profit, assuming the landlord would hope it would be a for-profit operation. Right, and this does nothing about the dentist office across the street from me, which is a commercial.
Is, forgive me, is this just a question of defining the activity? Do we all agree that?
What are we trying to do here? This doesn't tell us.
So is, is, does the select board? Sorry, I just feel a need to jump in. It's, I, I, I think, and I'll put it out there for you to chew on. I think one of your goals would be to minimize homes and neighborhoods from being turned into hotel neighborhoods through the use of short-term rental activity. So that your neighbors don't change every, every night or every weekend. That's a comment that you heard from a lot of people in email and in these meetings. And so I would like to say that this is what this purpose is getting at. Maybe it doesn't do so very eloquently. Do we agree that that is the general goal?
I don't know. There was agreement in this, in the joint thing, right? There was a whole discussion about you know, the, the negative flavor of saying, we don't want strangers here. We don't want others here. Is if what we're trying to do is stop short-term rentals, let's say that, or reduce short-term rentals, let's say that.
We are, it, it does say that, Ed. It says reduce short-term rentals in.
It says reduce commercial activity.
Yes.
Okay, so let's change, reduce short-term rentals and then I'm going to vote no because I don't know that we need to do that. I mean, that, it seems like we're putting the conclusion, what we're trying to do is reduce short-term rentals. Now let's come up with a reason.
I would like to do. I think one of the things the planning board, at least some members of the planning board talked about, and I would agree with, is we want to maintain, we want to reduce short-term rentals, reduce commercial activity in residential neighborhoods because it's changing the whole character of the neighborhood. Whether we want to do away with it or we want to just reduce it, that's, that's another topic. But I think we want to keep the, the flavor of our neighborhoods. And if you have four or five Airbnbs, short-term rentals, we've seen in my neighborhood and others, that it does change the character of a neighborhood.
So should, should we continue knowing that Ed is, is not on board with that particular element?
If that's what we're trying to do, then let's say reduce short-term rentals, not commercial activity.
Even control short-term rental is fine with me.
Control.
Yeah.
Ed, it, it is commercial activity. It's unright, it's unregulated.
So is the dentist office across the street from me.
These are specifically talking about short-term, that the title of this is short-term rental of residential properties.
I, I agree with you, so let's say that.
Okay, well, I, I disagree, but can we continue? Wordsmithing, I guess, so to speak.
Well, we're not wordsmithing. We, we are trying to get the general concepts down. And if we can't come up with a purpose tonight, we're not getting any farther.
Okay, so your comment is to
I'm trying to find something that both you and Ed will agree to.
Well. So you're saying, Ed, you want to replace the word commercial activity with short-term rentals?
That's what we're trying to do, right?
Well, let's, let's continue. We'll, we'll make a note and, and see how this affects the rest of it.
Chris, do you want to? I'm not so sure I agree with that, Lee, because quite honestly, if we can't get past that, I'm not sure we can get past.
It, it's going to trickle down, so I want to continue with this because there's a reason why that's in there.
So, so the next statement there in, in this particular clause or sentence is to enable residents to earn extra money from their properties to better afford to live here, maintain their properties, and contribute to the community.
I have an issue with that, but.
What is your issue, Ed?
Well, when, when did we decide that a purpose of this is to help some taxpaying homeowners, but not others?
I, I think that's a proposal for you to discuss tonight.
Right, well.
Whether or not you do agree that that should be a purpose in bylaw.
Right. I thought she was asking, sorry.
One of those, and, and the, the way, and the way this proposal does it is way that folks may or may not agree with. But is that a general statement that folks?
This proposal does, I say this proposal meets that that purpose of enabling residents to earn money. I'm wondering why we, when we came up with the purpose to help residents earn money as opposed to other taxpaying homeowners.
So you're wondering if residents should be broader and should be owners?
Taxpaying homeowners, yeah.
Okay, something you can discuss.
So Ed, to the crux of, of the issue that you have here, are you talking about the primary residency requirement? That you feel that not only are residents should be able to operate short-term rentals, but other?
So the, the primary resident requirement is a step to get us towards the purpose. What I'm disagreeing with here is the purpose that leaves out taxpaying homeowners that aren't residents. So I would, my problem is what you're, you're defining a purpose. It, it, again, it looks like what you're saying is we don't want second homeowners to be able to Airbnb their homes. So we're going to come up with a purpose that does that. What I'm saying is what are we trying to accomplish? Let's say that. Why are we trying to accomplish, why are we trying to allow one group of homeowners, taxpaying homeowners, to do something and another taxpaying homeowner isn't? That couldn't be our purpose, right? Our purpose is to limit, to limit Airbnbs in residential neighborhoods. So that's, that's what we should be doing.
So Ed, let me speak to that. So we have a housing shortage in Great Barrington. No, let me, let me finish.
You, you started this. We're in the problem.
Let me finish. I'm going to answer your, your question. We have a housing shortage in Great Barrington. There's 200 short-term rentals that are available. Fifty-six of those are owned by investors. We have zero long-term rentals available in town. That means people that want to live here, that want to communicate, to contribute to this community, cannot find housing. Fifty-six of those 200 short-term rentals are owned by investors. Those are homes that could be lived in by.
I think you should use the word investor.
Okay, Ed, let me finish. Let me finish, Ed. Those are 56 homes that could be available for long-term rentals or homeownership for people that want to live here full-time. That's what this is doing. That's what the primary residency requirement is doing. It's reducing the impact of short-term rentals in neighborhoods. So our neighborhoods don't get taken over by investors coming here to seek profit and take up the, the houses that are needed by residents. So it does reduce the impact of short-term rentals. It doesn't reduce it. It doesn't stop it from being rented by primary residents. But it does reduce it. So it's a balancing act of creating more affordable housing by deterring speculators or second homeowners, or wherever you want to say that, so that there's more homes available for, for residents and for people that want to live here. The other impact that short-term rentals has is increasing rental prices and home prices. So we're trying to get a handle over, on the artificially increased rates of housing and rentals. So by having speculators come in, in and buy properties and turn them into short-term rentals, it's affecting neighboring homes. So it's, it's a balancing act, Ed.
My turn? I take extreme issue with the word speculators. Yes, I would also like to stop speculators. You are also stopping somebody who's lived here their whole life, who retires to Florida and spends more than six months there. They can't keep their home unless they can afford to leave it empty. Right, that it, it stops second homeowners. I'm president of a nonprofit. A fair amount of our support comes from second homeowners who spend a lot of time here. What you're saying is only second homeowners who can afford to keep their houses empty are coming here. So of the fifty units, fifty-six units, how many have to become full-time rentals? Which is not a purpose here. We don't say increasing full-time rentals is a purpose. Right, if that's what we're trying to do, if we're trying to stop speculators, I'm not sure what a speculator is, right? We all buy a home hoping it goes up in value before we sell it. If we're trying to stop speculators, let's make that the purpose. If we're trying to stop strangers from coming to our town and staying for a couple of days, let's make that the purpose. That's what I'm saying. Um, I, I don't, I don't see that here. So I don't see how taking some taxpaying homeowners and treating them differently from others. Taxpaying owners who are part of this community, who support things we do here, who shop in our stores, who hire contractors here. I don't see how treating them differently solves this problem. And I, I thought it had been decided both in the joint group and then later at the planning board, this isn't going to address that problem. Of those fifty-six units, how many is enough? What, so I would like a, this is why they say about goals, is ten units enough? If fif- of ten of those fifty-six become long-term rentals, is that the goal? Or is it fifteen or is it five? What are we trying to accomplish?
We're trying to deter people from coming in and purchasing properties just for profit. And taking homes away that could be.
One at a time, one at a time.
The stock bridge one says corporate interests can't do this. It says second homeowners can. That's not corporate interest, the second homeowner. That's somebody who wants to be part of our community and contribute to the community. And what you're saying is only the rich need, become second homeowners. Only people who can afford to do that can become second homeowners.
No one is stopping second homeowners from continuing to rent their properties.
Yes, they are. They can't do it short-term rentals.
They, they could long-term rental.
Right, but then they can't use their home. So they can't be part of the community. That keeps them from being part of the community.
Ed, we're not stopping, uh, second homeowners from coming here or renting out their homes.
Uh, if I need to use my home three months a year, I can't rent it out. I could rent it out for six months. That's not going to help our problem. Or seven or eight months, right? That's not going to give us a year-round rental. If I have a second home, if I move to Florida and I can't afford to keep my home empty, I have to sell it or rent it year-round and not use it. Then I can't come back. Why are we doing that? Why are we doing that? Why do we want to do that to our people who've lived here their whole lives? Who've invested in this community, who've raised their kids here. Why do we want to tell them they can't keep their home? Unless they rent it out year-round and don't use it. That, that's my problem with separating the two. So you can tell a story about corporate interests and the stock bridge one takes care of that. Corporations can't do this. So I, that, I don't know why enabling residents to earn extra money is a purpose as opposed to, uh, enabling taxpayers who also have to pay the taxes here and upkeep their homes and things like that. I don't know why that's not included.
Lee, go ahead.
Ed, because we're, we're trying to.
Ed, let her speak.
We're trying to address the, the rising properties, the, the rising costs of rentals and the rising costs of homeownership. When we have people come in and purchase homes primarily and solely to rent them out as short-term rentals, that, that takes properties away from, uh, residents that want to move here, that can't afford to work here. And we're trying to create a balance that addresses this.
Okay, so I agree with that purpose.
The primary residency requirement is something that is used in many, in many towns. So you're trying to, uh, suggest that this is something that is coming out from the sky when it's not. Okay, it, we're trying to create a balance that will allow residents that need the extra income to continue to short-term rental. But we're trying to deter people from coming in and seeing Great Barrington as a cash cow and primarily using this just to make money. So there's this balance. So that's what this is doing. We do have many second homeowners that, uh, that do buy per, uh, properties and that just, um, have them sit there and rent them out as short-term rentals. And when they do this, this takes properties away from being available for residents. So it's, it's that balancing act of trying to address these increasing properties that are, that are, um, brought on by the, the speculators, but the people that come in primarily for profit.
I agree with you.
I think there's more than two people in the room, correct?
Yeah, you could say something, absolutely.
I agree with what Lee is saying. I understand the concept of what he's saying. I think we're just trying to keep people wanting to be here that aren't, or maybe have the deep pockets from taking over where others that live here, as you said, Ed, that want to stay here, um, can be here. Without having to worry about it. I, I, I don't see the issue you're seeing, I guess.
So the issue I'm seeing is if we're trying to stop people who are solely here to speculate and rent it out, let's say that. We're also stopping people who want to retire to Florida and use their house sometime during the year, just not all year, but can't afford to keep it empty. If that's not what we're trying to stop, why are we writing this in a way to stop it? If what we're trying to stop is people from treating this place as a cash cow, and there are lots of people who come to here to make a living. If we're trying to stop people from using houses solely to rent out a short-term rental, let's say that that's, that's the purpose. I agree with that. So let's change that to stopping the practice of people buying up homes and renting them out solely as short-term rental. Right, so let's, instead of saying, uh, residents, which I think you're defining as primary residents, to say primary and part-time residents. Um, then we, then we cover it. And all we're dealing with then is companies that come up and buying house, buying houses and make them unavailable for long-term rentals. I'd agree with that. So I agree with all, I, I, first of all, the whole speech about needing to provide more housing, people, I absolutely agree with. Right, we all know that there's that shortage, so we don't need to keep restating the problem. The issue I have is we're going after second, all second homeowners here. We're stopping all second homeowners in which at this point includes people who've lived here for forty years and moved to Florida for part of the year. I don't know why we're cutting them out.
Ed, we're not cutting them out. We're just trying to reduce.
Right, I, well, you are cutting them out. I understand you're not cutting short-term rentals out.
What did they do before short-term rentals, Ed? What, what did these people do?
Short-term rentals, short-term rentals is new. Airbnb is new.
This, this is allowing them to, 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 uh, take more houses from residents that, that want to live.
Our residents, that's what I'm saying.
People that live here full-time. There, there's zero rentals available.
Let her finish.
So we're trying to reduce that number. We're trying to provide housing. So if we just limit it to corporations, that's not going to do anything. That's not going to, not to create, it won't create more housing. We're trying to create more housing and we're trying to, to even out the, the playing field. And we're trying to turn, stop our neighborhoods from becoming open air ins and hotels. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to deter spectators, we're speculators. We're trying to deter people from solely coming in for profit. And I'm sorry if second homeowners are, are getting swept up in the net, but we have a housing crisis. And there are, people with second homes have options. We're not preventing them from moving here. They can long-term rent. They can, they can move here full-time.
You can't long-term rent if you're a second homeowner.
Well, they, they can certainly rent it out for a few months.
Let me play devil's advocately. The difference between, uh, banning commercial speculation and banning second homeowners, why do you, why is that so much different?
I'd like to ask Ed, how is this?
The question, so.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to define, uh, commercial operators. Uh, Ed, how do we define a corporate owner?
I don't understand. It's, it's a corporation.
So we're separating, uh, second homeowners verse, versus what you're, you're targeting. You're targeting, uh, commercial corporate ownerships. People, explain what Stockbridge is doing.
Yes, they don't, they allow, um, they don't make the differentiation on how long a person lives there. It's the ownership status, so corporations can't engage in it.
I'll just put Stockbridge on screen.
So corporations, meaning, uh, LLC, um, because many people.
Chris, could you just read that part?
Yeah, it's item four in Stockbridge's bylaw, four point one, A. Following residential properties prohibited from, after short-term rental, a residential property owned by a corporation other than an LLC. Forable housing, those that are professionally managed. So it's this, Ed.
Residential property owned by a corporation other than an LLC.
Probably because LLCs are often family trusts or something like that. I'm not sure why that distinction is there. Have to talk to Stockbridge, but.
Ed, so what about, um, owners that come in that aren't owned by corporations or LLC? So you're assuming that people, um, that aren't, you know, let's say natural person, uh, purses, persons are owned by a corporation. So what's to prevent a, a person uh, buying many properties and not putting it into an LLC?
They could. They don't, they aren't, right? We have fifty-six out of our thirty-two hundred housing units, we have fifty-six that are, that are Airbnb, not by permanent residents. So they're not flooding in here doing that. It's sort of why I wonder why when the, uh, the housing subcommittee had to deal with housing, this was the first thing that came up, right? We're having a special meeting to deal with Airbnb. We haven't had a special meeting to deal with um, any of the other possible solutions for housing. You know, I, it seems like our goal is to stop short-term rentals. The goal is not to create housing, which again, both committees and then the planning board on their own have said this won't do. So that this, this is not going to in any major way increase housing. Certainly won't increase affordable housing and it probably won't increase rentals. People who are doing this don't want to be in the rental business. Right, so you have half million dollar homes that are going to go on the market. I, I just, we're telling the story of corporations coming in here and buying up houses. We could just as easily tell the story of retirees, performers, teachers and firefighters who've moved to Florida, who can't keep their house because we're going to take away the only way they can afford to pay the taxes. Or people who move away for a few months, um, or more than a few months. Somebody who's gone, takes a job for half a year of, just over half a year, can't rent out their house unless they find somebody who wants it for that same time. I, I, we're telling them, we're making up a story about solving a problem. There's absolutely no indication that that will do it. So I don't know why in the purpose we separate residents from part-time residents, unless that word doesn't mean full-time. Right, unless we're saying enable residents includes part-time residents, in which case I've got no problem here. So let's say that, and in, in, to enable, uh, full-time and part-time residents to earn extra money from their properties. We could do that, then we agree on that.
So how, so seeing that you've researched Stockbridge, how many, um, corporations are you saying that are in Great Barrington right now?
I have no idea how many corporations. We know there are fifty-six units that are not owned by primary residents. I'm guessing very few of those are corporate. I don't know. I think my guess is most of these people who are running Airbnbs are people who live here, who bought a second home and they're making a living. It's what they do for a living. Or to supplement their income. It's expensive to keep a home in Great Barrington.
Okay, so, so, uh, short-term rentals benefit wealthier homeowners. So what about the people?
Short-term rentals benefit all of us.
Short-term rentals benefit wealthier homeowners. So these are people that have options, that have money, that can come in and, and come into a community and live in a, in a place, uh, part-time and short-term rental for the rest of it. So what I'm, um, advocating for is supporting the residents that, that don't have that wealth, that actually are looking for long-term res, uh, rentals in this town that, um, are prevented from that because there are zero rent, uh, long-term rentals available. So this is trying to create more housing. This is deterring uh, anyone, the, the, primarily the people that have the options to have second homes and third homes and fourth homes from purchasing here because there is a housing shortage. So by reducing the number of short-term rentals, we're increasing the, the number of, of houses for residents. And this will in turn bring the prices down for rentals and for homeownership. So it's this balancing act. So I, I do understand that, um, second, uh, homeowners will, um, be impacted by this. But what I also am saying is that there are many residents that are being priced out of our town, of this town, and there are many, many residents that would like to live here that cannot find long-term rentals here. So I thi- I think, you know, you're on one hand, um, uh, supporting the, the second homeowners and the investors. And I'm trying to stick up for the people caught in the middle, the, the seniors that are, um, you know, struggling that are finding their assessments increasing because of the, um, the, uh, the high turnover investment properties. So that's what I'm saying is that we have a, a, a housing shortage in Great Barrington and although, um, short-term, uh, second homeowners are, um, incredibly impactful and, and welcome in Great Barrington because of the state of our housing at the moment. We need to, to make room for people that are actually wanting to live here and contribute here and send their kids to school here. So, so that's what I'm talking about. And, and if we just limited to corporate ownership, it's not going to reduce um, any of the short-term rentals. It's not going to create more housing.
So I'm not talking about the wealthy short, the wealthy second homeowners. In fact, this doesn't affect the wealthy second homeowners. The wealthy second homeowners don't need to do short-term rentals. They can keep their houses empty. It's the other second homeowners, the other people who live here who have, who bought a second home. The people who've retired, and this is now their second home, who can't afford to do, to keep the home. That's who I'm concerned about. And if you will stand up at town meeting and say the purpose of this is to lower property values, I'll stop talking now because it'll never pass. It sounds like what you just said. You're trying to lower property values.
So, what, what I'm saying is that there are people that want to live here full-time that want to move here and there's zero rentals available. There's zero long-term rentals available. There, there are people sitting on these houses primarily using short-term rentals to profit from. So we're trying to create, we're trying to create housing for people that actually want to live here full-time and bring the prices down because they've been artificially inflated by people coming in and purchasing properties, uh, as investments.
Okay, so put that in the purpose.
It is in the purpose.
It is where? We're trying to lower property values?
I didn't say lower property values. I said create more housing. That, where is that?
Okay, let's stop now because we're accomplishing nothing here. We've gone a half hour on the purpose and we're obviously not getting anywhere. Um, I have some questions, one being, um, as a compromise, is there data to show that how many corporations own short-term rentals here? And what the value of those houses are? Because we're, we're discussing something that's there is, we don't have data on, so we both have opinions. We all have opinions. The other question is, is there other areas that have done this, that have stopped second homeowners from having short-term rentals and seen an increase in long-term rentals? Because that's really the crux of this argument is Ed has his opinion, Lee has hers, Garfield has his, I have mine. But the only way we can really show this is some proof. Because when we get to the town meeting, whichever version we get there, if we take any version, that you have to have an argument. You have to have proof that it's going to work, not an opinion. So I, that's just my question. I'm not against it. I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
I'd like to say something as well. Uh, I, again, kind of back quickly saying, I get the concept, I get the idea. Maybe we aren't using the right verbiage, maybe we're getting into semantics. But I understand it. There is a housing shortage. There are people here that can't afford to stay here and because of the reasons and correct me if I'm wrong, but I have to admit, I don't know if it's hearsay or not, but I have heard that there are some people that are losing their homes. People are buying up and they're putting them out because they want to make short-term, uh, rentals. And I get it. There are people that want to stay here, that can't afford to stay here. And we need to make a way that they can stay here. I'm going to tell you right now, I don't have the correct answer. I like the concept Lee has, but we can't deny the fact that that's, what's going on is really what's happening. It is happening in this town. So, and, and we need to do something to correct it. I'd like to see the field leveled.
I think we're, we're right now going around in circles. And the fact is, is that. I think we're right now going around in circles. And the fact is, is that. Part of the problem is, we all know that there is a problem with long term rentals. There's a problem with affordable housing, workforce housing. And the question is, does this solve that problem? Any version, first of all, any version. The version that Lee's written, which is is well written, the version that the planning board gave us, which is equally well written. Stockbridge is, is it really solving this problem? Is that, and is that the only reason we're doing it? You know, one of the discussions we had was to reduce commercial activity in residential neighborhoods. Is it going to do that? I mean, those are things I think we better be sure of before we move ahead. It's clear we're not going to have a consensus tonight or any night. But I think we also have to decide, you know, is this? The one thing that's going to help us, is there other things that we maybe should be looking at even for more uh? Before we we continue with this. I'm not sure of the answer. Garfield, you're right, we need more affordable housing. Does this accomplish that? I don't know. I'm not against it. I think it's 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 a good version, but is it gonna do it? Second homeowners are the fabric of our community, always have been. They're part of our community. They're our friends and our neighbors. We don't want them to leave. But we want to make sure that. The people who've born and been here their whole life can afford to live here. How do we do that? I I think that's, I think we can all agree on that. But the question is. Is reducing short term rentals going to do that? And if it is, how are we going to reduce short term rentals? There's a whole me- a whole series of ways to do it. Ban short term rentals, ban second homeowners from having it, ba- banning commercial. I think we have to agree on one of those, at least that have a majority. But, you know, I think that we we have to realize. Two things, people can't afford to live in Great Barrington right now. Many people cannot afford. I think Lee's pointed that out. She's absolutely right. There's no doubt about it. The second part of that is, we're not here to discriminate against second homeowners. No one is. Second homeowners are people who we've known for our whole lives. They've moved here when they were in their forties. They still live here. It just may not be their permanent residence. So we have to figure out a way to do this. And I think us arguing for a half hour was enough. And if we can't come to an agreement. If it's just a matter of wordsmithing, terrific, we'll have Chris do that. But it's not, it's the concepts that we can't agree on right now.
Can I ask Ed a question? Ed, i- if we do find out how many uh of these properties are owned by corporations. Uh, what number would be enough impact for you to move forward with this? Uh, short term rental regulation. So let's say we find out there's only five, th- then then what are we trying to do with this?
I I'm not sure what we're going to do with this. That's what I keep saying. It seems like we started. Just told the whole discussion started with, how do we get rid of short term rentals? And then we back into, let's come up with reasons to do it. If we're trying to create affordable housing, why are we spending our time talking about short term rentals at most?
I never, I never ever once said that we're creating affordable housing.
Sorry, housing, more housing. Right, there are, there are all sorts of proposals the planning board has had that we haven't talked about on the select board about crea- about creating more housing. Uh, this is, this isn't going to do it. If you've got somebody who's done, you've, there, plenty of them have been to these meetings, they're probably listening to this one. Have talked about the fact that if they weren't doing short term rentals, they wouldn't become long term rentals. They're going to sell the house probably to a second homeowner because of the price. Uh, we have no indication that there are any numbers that back this up, that of those fifty six units, which is all we're talking about, fifty six. How many of those will become year round housing? We have no idea. And we do, we also don't know what it's going to cost the town is in terms of the room tax we won't get anymore, the three percent we won't get anymore on top of that. The tourists coming to town to shop, uh, the landlords who are losing money, we have no idea what the cost is. So how are we going to do a cost benefit analysis and how are the voters going to to decide if this is something they want? They're doing it based on stories we're telling, and you and I are telling different stories. And neither of us know what's right. That's my point about all of this. We do know there are second homeowners who won't be able to afford to keep their home. That we absolutely know.
So one, one of the things I would think we would want to do next. Is instead of going in a circle for the next hour, which I have no desire to do and we won't do. Is that we come up with some questions, some data questions that we would ask staff to come back with. So that we at least can be talking the same language.
So uh, those, that's where I started. Um, you know, how many?
Slow learner, just catch up.
That's okay. How many homes are we likely to get by stopping uh non-primary residents? From doing short term rentals? How much is it likely to cost the town directly? Which is uh loss of income. Um, hold on, I got my notes here. Uh, increased expenses for um. Uh, the the cost of registration and uh enforcement. How much uh, you know, lost tourism, I don't think we'll be able to come up with that number. Um, lost support from second homeowners for the nonprofits that they support.
But but there are other questions, and I think Lee pointed it out. How many of our short term rentals are owned by corporations?
Right.
Rightly, is it five?
Right, yeah.
Is is it, is it fifty six? Is it all of them? You know, how many are owned by corporations? What for short term rentals? Of our short term rentals are are houses, what is, what's the values of those? Or is it, is it a fact that the short term rentals? Are too expensive and will never be sold as housing that's affordable? Or is it a fact that some of them could be? If every one of our short term rentals, and I'm exaggerating, is worth a million dollars, then obviously we have a problem. But if some of them are in the affordable range and could be used as long term rentals, then this makes sense.
This is the short term rentals that are owned by second or not primary residents.
All of our short term rentals, so let's look at.
Ones owned by primary residents aren't going to get sold. They're already occupied.
That's true, that's true.
I think it's unfair to categorize um residences as, you know, or people that want to live here. Um, as as too poor to afford some of the second homes. So I I think that that's something that we need to to stop talking about. Because, you know, y- you talk about, well, the second homes, uh, they'll end up. Um, you know, putting them on the market and no one's going to be able to afford them except, you know, wealthy uh second homeowners. So I I'd like to stop saying that because there are many families that do want to move here. Um, that do have the means. So I I think that we should um, you know, pretty uh, you know, stop that discussion and categorization of people. Because there are people that can afford um homes that second homeowners do have right now that want to live here that cannot. So. Um, a- and the other thing I'd like to say is, is that this is a deterrent, Ed. So, you know, we're focused on these fifty six homes, but we're also trying to send a signal out that. Uh, we care about our residents and we care about the long term folks that have been here their whole lives. And they're struggling with with uh raising, rising property taxes and increased assessment. So I think this sends a signal out that, you know, we care as a community. And we we do value our second homeowners, but we also value the people that are are wanting to contribute to this community. And that cannot find homes here or cannot afford afford them. So I think the reality of the situation is that there are people coming in primarily to um, to make money off short term rentals. And what this uh particularly proposal does is try to to deter those people. And to try to allow that for more residents to come in and contribute to this town. So um, I understand what your point is, but what my fear is that if we just limit it to corporations, we're not going to make any impact. And it's not going to be worth doing it at all. And perhaps this is what you're trying to do is derail this uh regulation um completely. And uh, you know, I I'm getting a sense that perhaps that that's what this is about. Because if we don't have enough corporations that uh have short term rentals, then why are we doing this? And what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that this is a deterrent. And the reason that we have primary residencies requirements is that it works. And there are many municipalities that have used this. So this is not uh creating something that has never ever been done before.
So I have a question. You said that this raises taxes?
I didn't say, no, I didn't say it raised taxes. What I'm saying is that when there's an upsurge in properties that are flipped or sold as investment properties. And then improvements are made that raises the assessments of neighboring homes. And sometimes these homes are owned by full, uh, by long time residents. So a lot of these, um, a lot of these folks that are, have been living in their homes for years and years and years. Uh, um, are seeing their assessments uh increase. Due to um the high surge in people buying homes and turning them into short term rentals. So what I'm talking about is that um, there is an impact to uh residents that live here um full time. Uh, when uh investors come in and and purchase homes and do improvements. So that that's what I'm saying.
I guess another number we want to get is of the fifty six units, how many have changed hands recently? You know, are people buying them to turn them into, you know, the two are, the article in the paper that talked about two people who were evicted when their homes were sold, they were renters. Neither of those were short term rentals. There was both people who bought homes who wanted to uh own them as second homes. This doesn't do, this won't, wouldn't have helped either of those people. Um, so of those fifty six units, how many of, you know, when were they, when did they last change hands?
But Ed, I'm just trying to find a common ground here. Um, do you recognize that there are no long term rentals available?
Yes.
Okay, that that deterring people from coming in here to short term rental, whether they're second homeowners or invest- investors. Is something that we need to look into.
In order to increase the stock of housing? No, I just. No, I don't agree with that. I don't, I don't think we're doing that. I don't think stopping short term rentals will create a significant amount of housing. I don't think it'll create ten new housing units. Of the fifty six, my guess would be. Um, they will either uh stop doing short term rentals because they can afford to. Um, sell them, in which case uh, you know, the, some of them will be sold to year round residents, some to other second homeowners. Um, I I don't think, uh, I I think people who do this don't want to be landlords. They don't want to, they don't want, I I I I listened to the people who spoke at our meetings, one after the other. Who talked about, the ones who do this, talked about why they do this, and they had all sorts of reasons. Um, I think one of them did it for a living. Most of them were doing it, uh, you know, there was a letter in the paper from the family. We're doing it to pay their co- daughter's college tuition. Um, I don't, I don't, I I could not agree with you more a- about your statement of the problem. We all agree on that. We don't ever have to say that again and spend more time stating the problem. I don't think this is a solution. I don't think of that fifty six units, we're going to come up with a significant number. Um, I think we should regulate Airbnbs, absolutely. I think everything else in your proposal and the planning board. And in Stockbridge, makes sense about smoke detectors and fire extinguishers.
So, so Ed, um, so when we think about creating housing and we cr- we think about creating housing that's integrated in communities. So we have fifty six homes that are integrated right now in our communities. Um, second homeowners, if they're relying on short term rentals um in order to live here. If they're deterred from doing that right now, you're saying that they're just going to sit on their properties and and not short term rental? Because when they already be doing that.
I, the ones who can afford it, I think will do that. The ones who can't afford it will, you know, either bite the bullet somewhere else or sell.
Yeah, so so bite the bullet. So let's talk about biting of the bullet. So those. Biting the bullet, so they're, they have choices to make, okay? So the people that are relying on short term rentals to stay here. And if if um this uh proposal is enacted, they're going to have to bite the bullet. So they'll either sell, which will uh increase um the availability of houses for residents that want to live here. Uh, they'll move into the long term rental market, which will help us um because there are zero rentals available. Um, or they'll move here uh as full time residents and contribute to this community um and and possibly send their kids to school. So there is, there's no, it's all, it's a win win situation. Ed, I'm just saying that i- if you're talking about very, very wealthy homeowners, if they, if they have the ability to own homes here and not short term rental. They're already doing that. So you're trying to. You're trying to paint a picture that these people um will just uh decide to sit on their short term rentals and have these empty homes. And and my point is, if they have that money already, they're, they're, they're already doing that. So um, this is a major deterrent.
It's not a major deterrent. You're talking about the very wealthy homeowners aren't, aren't doing this, don't need to do this. It's the people who, when I say bite the bullet, what I mean is put less money into renovating their houses and to upkeep of the houses. Because they got to get the money somewhere that they're no longer getting. They're not going to move up here if their job is somewhere else, or if their kids are somewhere else.
So what are they going to do, Ed? What are they going to do?
They are go, if they're going to, they're going to either cut back somewhere else or sell the house. They don't have their options.
Or they're going to long term rent.
That's not what you heard from the people who've come to the meeting, who I listened to. None of them said they would do long term rentals. That I haven't heard from a single person doing short term rental who said they would do long term rental. If they had been doing that these last couple of years, they wouldn't have received grant because of COVID. They're not taking the risk. You're, if you go to the Board of Health meetings, you're listening to a problem uh between a landlord and a tenant. That's not what they're doing, but that's not, that doesn't matter. We, I guess what we're asking is of the fifty six units, and that's all there are. How many of them, how many of them have changed hands recently? People are not rushing in here and buying up housing to short term rental. People are doing short term rentals in the houses they already own, which were already not available year round. Where we just, we're, we're making up a story. You keep making up this story. I have the story I keep telling about seniors living in Florida. I'm making that up. We have no idea. We don't know this. What would work is almost every one of us has a backyard with room for an ADU. The town could be encouraging people to build ADUs to give tax abatements when you do it. We're not doing that, we're not talking about that. That's what we should be talking about. We could create.
We're talking about short term rentals, okay? This is part of.
How many things we could be doing? This isn't going to create housing. It's not going to do it. I'm still talking. The planning board went through the, right? We sent it to the planning board. And even when we sent it, we had come to the consensus, we're not talking about solving the housing problem. Or making a dent in the housing problem. And when the planning board got hold of it, they took that out completely. Right now, all of a sudden, it's back again. This isn't going to do that. Building ADUs in our backyards will do it. Uh, allowing um, uh, you know, mo- multiple, multi-family housing, like if the nursing home will do it. Uh, that's what's going to create housing. That's where our focus ought to be. That's what we ought to be having special meetings about.
So the question becomes is, we've gotten derailed for the last almost hour. About affordable housing or workforce housing, whatever you want to call it. Was that the only purpose of this bylaw? I don't think it was. I think there were other purposes. Uh, the planning board would not have sent it back to us in the form it was in if that was the only purpose because they took it out. Um, they're just talking about commercialization of neighborhoods. Let's talk about health and safety. Can we agree that those are reasons to do this type of a bylaw?
Yeah, the, yes. And again, I'd like a definition of commercialization.
Just work with me.
I don't want anyone putting the dentist across the street out of business.
The dentist across the street doesn't rent their rooms to people to sleep.
But it, it's a commercial activity in the residential neighborhood.
Right, but this is, we're talking about short term rentals.
Bylaw is, is titled short term rental regulations, isn't talking about dentists.
Right.
Understand your point, but so I think at this point, we should ask Chris to come back. And the administration to the next meeting with some data. And we have to plug through this in. We're not going to all agree on this. We're, we're clearly not going to agree on this, but if we can get three out of four votes, we move this along. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, I will guarantee you when we're done with this, no one will be happy on this board. But hopefully we've accomplished something, and we, we haven't tonight. So we have to, we have to regroup and figure out how we're going to do this. This will also give the chance for us who have not read the Stockbridge bylaw to read that. I, I have no qualms of saying I haven't read it. So that will be in the packet for the next meeting. Does that make sense for everyone?
That will be sent out, so we all will see it.
Yes, yes. No, I haven't seen it even. Okay, let's, let's move ahead. We're not accomplishing anything here. Um. There, a couple of people have had their hand up and. Start with Michelle.
I'm Michelle Le Bear, Seventy Division Street. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I've been following this for quite a while now, going to the planning board meetings and listening to your discussions. And this made me uncomfortable when it first started. And tonight's discussion is, uh, I'm just beside myself. Uh, I do, but I do want to thank Ed for bringing up. Numerous points that I had. Um, from a personal level, um, Lee, you've been at my home, Garfield's been at my home. My dad, uh, born nineteen twenty one in Great Barrington. His family immigrated into Great Barrington. My mother nineteen twenty seven in Housatonic. Dad was a bricklayer, built the house I'm in now. My mom on her deathbed wanted to make sure it would stay in the family. So that's why we're in the house now. I'm not wealthy. I'm not a speculator. But one thing, my husband works for a nonprofit. I work in education. You're not talking corporate retirement plans in in these two industries. So my husband and I were talking about, okay, what several years down the line, what are we looking at as far as retirement? We thought one way to, we're, we don't know whether we're going to stay in Great Barrington when we retire. My husband's from Michigan. There's other places. I haven't traveled a lot. We may want to travel. One thing we do want to do is leave our house to our daughter, not sell it. And we said, well, you know, here's a way we can do it. We can go somewhere else, like Ed pointed out, not Florida. We're not planning to go to Florida. Do, you know, Airbnb or something on the house. And then when the time is right, hand it over to my daughter, who her and her future husband may say, hey. We're done with the city life. We want to come to the Berkshires, send our kids to the school. Essentially, the short term bylaw kills our retirement plan. I'm an unintended consequence, I'm collateral damage in this. And I do agree, this is not going to solve our housing crisis. It's not. And I also feel like I'm being forced. Oh, well, hey, if you don't want to do that, Michelle, do long term rentals. Well, what if I don't want to do long term rentals? I've been there and I've done that. We owned a house on Cadastre that was long term rentals. And we ended up converting it to a single family. But that was, that's part of my right to do the, this. And I feel like I'm being told. Well, you're not going to be able to ask top dollar on the house if you have to sell it. You have to. Use it for long term rentals. We're not gonna be able to leave it empty. But you're, like I said, Ed was right. There are people living here in Great Barrington. Who may want to go somewhere else, but not give up their home. And I'm really upset about this. Uh, I think we're barking up the wrong tree to solve a problem. And um, I I can't agree with it. And uh, I just want to thank both Lee and Ed for the discussion that went on tonight. But I I I'm grinding my teeth right now, because um, and my, like I said, my husband and I. We're trying to figure out years down the line how we're going to retire comfortably. And that was the plan, and this will negate that plan.
Thank you. Trevor Forbes.
Thank you, Trevor Forbes, three twenty five North Plain Road. Thank you very much um, uh, to the Sletball for letting me speak. And um, also for actually a very spirited and good debate, I thought. Uh, and I commend both Ed and um, and Lee in particular. And the chair for um, having that debate, but I would like to make some comments. As Ed and most of you know, it's very rare that I actually agree and take the same side as Ed. But in this particular instance, I have to say I agree with him um, wholeheartedly. And I think the problem that we, that he was indicating uh, was absolutely correct. Because um, what is being proposed by Lee uh, really is almost putting up um, a banner saying. Great Barrington does not want second home um, owners um, in any way, shape or form. I think it's right to look at corporates, but I would like to also urge caution in terms of how you define what a corporate is. We have an LLC that we operate in Great Barrington. We could easily um, use that LLC to buy um, property and then do whatever we wanted with that. Um, so you have to be very careful how you define this, but I do agree with the sentiment that was indicated that um, allowing. A corporate entity rather than a corporate entity that's part of a family that wants to have a second home in Great Barrington. I think that is the um, that is the aspect you should look at. But let's be under no illusions that if we go down the route of trying to ban second homeowners. That has immense implications for the property taxes in Great Barrington, the Finance Committee. And I'm sure that uh, Lee, you would achieve your purpose of um, really reducing property values in Great Barrington quite significantly. Primarily because there's a lot of second homeowners in Great Barrington. So that will bring a lot of properties on the market. But as Ed pointed out, and I do agree with him here, this is basically not necessarily the properties that are going to solve. The affordable housing problem. You're trying to conflate two issues which don't necessarily um, go hand in hand. Um, so I'm in a strange position that actually I agree with your sentiment in terms of trying to promote affordable housing. I don't think this is the way you will do it. I think this is a way that you would undermine the finances of Great Barrington if you're not careful. And that's why, you know, I agree with the the sentiment of what uh, Ed has been talking about here. Now, I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Lucas, please. Name and address. Lucas. Just unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me now?
We can.
Apologies. Uh, Lucas Merchant, eighteen Castle Lane. Um, I've been, on most of these calls have been following you pretty closely. Um, you know, up until this call, I've been pretty on board with most of what uh, what's being discussed. Um, a few things that really stuck out to me tonight. Number one, the notion to, I I I originally thought that this was about creating affordable housing. Um, I I thought that the last time that we had this call, uh, we were going to put forth data supporting. You know, the fact that regulating short term rentals would create more short term housing, because I think everybody on the panel agrees that that is an issue. Lee Davis mentioned lowering property values and decreasing rents by doing this. Um, that's very alarming. Um, you know, I think the fact that. People in the town are trying to control the property values and driving them down is not a benefit to anybody. Um, I don't think anybody in Great Barrington wants to drive their property value down. That, that doesn't seem to make much sense to me. Um, you know, on top of that, uh, you know, I I think that the fact that we're, we're. Trying to control how tax paying citizens uh, use their property by basically forcing them to sell is also quite alarming. You know, all those things were, were clearly stated. I'm, I'm looking at my notes here. I I agree with a lot of what Ed has stated. I I don't see any data to support the fact that these fifty six houses. Being regulated will result in more affordable housing. And if this is about affordable housing, why are we not considering other uh, options? Uh, you know, somebody mentioned ADUs. Um, you know, the tax revenue from short term rentals being used to create more affordable housing is another possibility. It really seems clear after this call that we're trying to ban short term rentals for the sake of banning short term rentals. Um, when originally this was about creating more affordable housing. Um, and I think trying to back into a solution by just targeting short term rentals. Without any data to support it is very dangerous. Um, and I, 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 I find it frankly terrifying that we're, we're talking about. Wanting to drive property values down in a town. I mean, I don't even know if that's federally legal. Uh, it seems quite alarming. Um, that's all for me. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Dave and Georgine.
Hey, you can't hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Name, name and address, please.
So Dave Long, three oh four North Plain Road.
Thank you, Dave.
So, I mean, I I appreciate Lee's sincerity, but. In the end of the day, I think the unintended consequences of this approach are so overwhelming. For many of the same reasons that Ed's has been bringing up, you know, but you know, if you just look at the changing nature of work. We have very grown, a large, you know, vibrant and growing uh, professional population that are all contractors. They work in the movie business, they work, they're writers, they do all these things. They're constantly leaving for six months at a time, going on job and coming back. And the great thing is that they consider this to be their home, and when that job's done, they come home. And part of what makes that lifestyle possible is being able to do short term rentals. I'm really puzzled by the fifty six number. I'm not sure where that comes from, because. I mean, I was just thinking through of people that I know who at some point in the year do a short term rental, and I must know half of them if that's the case. And if it is a real number, then that's, you know, just over one percent of the population of the, of the housing stock that we have. That's not, there's not enough mass in that number to warrant as punitive a bylaw as this. It really doesn't go to. So if you want to actually address the speculative aspects and the overheating that's caused by Airbnb, as Ed says, deal with that. And you know, the most direct way of doing that is take the profit out of the tax that at activity heavily. And you want to give, you know, two rates between locals so that they can, you know, more easily afford to stay as opposed to someone else, fine. But if you had a pool of money coming in from that behavior that's causing a problem. And then applying that to, you know, building affordable housing is the last person just said. I mean, you would actually be creating, you know, a means to get to the actual problem, which is we don't have enough housing. I, I would, when I was in college here, I started working on affordable housing. I dedicated well over a decade. Actually working on that, starting community land trust projects, co housing projects, all kinds of projects. And all the financial issues have not changed. The problems with affordable housing has not changed. The multiplier, you know, of an average school teacher versus the cost of a house has gotten worse. But basically, it hasn't changed. We need to take direct action, as Ed said, make our top priority finding more housing. Not putting punitive restraints on those of us who are trying to use our assets the best we can to survive the best way we can.
So I think.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Dennis.
Hi, this is Dennis Antipas, nine B Monument Valley. Um, I wanted to thank everybody for a, a good debate tonight. Um, you know, I, I think one of the things that really caught me was that, you know, I think we all can appreciate um, affordable housing is a need. But I think with the proposal, what we're hearing was a lot of, I think someone put it alarming suggestions. With things that we didn't have data behind. So for instance, to say that if we eliminate shortened housing. That it's automatically gonna, that those houses would automatically be affordable to a local. And that, that's just unproven. Um, you know, one thing we could even look at, even look at that is. Years ago before I'm turn, uh, um, Airbnb came, you know, how long were houses sitting on the market? Were they bought up right away when they came out? If it was such affordability, then you would see that. And I think one of the worst things that we could do as a community is to. Focus so much on one thing that we don't like in the Airbnb and take away. From the goal of creating housing, right? And unless we can kind of separate the two and say, we want to create housing. We want to get money to create housing. We'll just go in circles as we did tonight, you know, and like one of the things we could say is. Airbnb, there's a lot of communities that fight with it. It's, it's here to stay. You know, is there a way that as a community we can make it work for us? Is there a tax that goes into an Airbnb, a short term rental that goes directly to affordable housing in the community? You know, again, I'm not sure that's the answer, but it's just an idea. Instead of creating, okay, I eliminate what I call the boogeyman. To get to an end result that won't really give me an end result, and what did I do, right? That's just a couple cents from my end.
Thank you very much. Nia Myle.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Um, okay, so I feel a little impassioned here. I may not be very clear, and I'm gonna try and be brief. Um, I, my feeling here, listening to all of this, is that no one is listening to the other, that people are not hearing. When Lee, I think, has said, and I think Steve, you did also, that this is not about. Solving the housing crisis. The housing crisis shortage is much more complex. This is not about solving it. It's about preserving those few homes that exist. We're talking in this instance about this number that is, that. That is fifty six and maybe wrong, may not be wrong. I accept it. Um. Yeah, it's a, a, people are fighting too much about this. There's an ability for us to come to a compromise. That allows for us to preserve the, the intimacy of a neighborhood and to keep. Um, uh, uh, commercial speculators from, from. Uh, purchasing houses that may be otherwise used for full time, long term. Tax paying, voting residents who raise families here, who work here, who have history here. And uh, it's not about stopping Airbnbs, as far as I can tell from what I've read. It's about having reasonable um, regulations that allow people that. That are winter escapees and go to Florida, or those people who are resident uh, summer camp workers to rent their homes when they're vacant. But um, not to, uh. Yep, not to, not to, not to eliminate the, the uh, uh, flavor of our community that we all love so much. And one gentleman just spoke about raising property values and didn't see how that quite related. There are a couple of very interesting articles that have just been published about how the gentrification of a neighborhood. Raises the um, property assessments that then affects the taxes that. Generations of people who have lived here can then no longer afford to pay. That seniors are being um, priced out of their homes. Uh, due to this kind of false, false, or I don't know, I shouldn't say false, but this, this. I don't know, I've lost the word, but in any event, I think we should, we should try and, and stop fighting so much about it and find the things that we all like. About a possible reasonable regulation and then start from that point. And then go to the things we don't agree on. Uh, this has been a really kind of contestive. Uh, discussion, which has certainly been energetic, but I don't think very productive. And thank you very much for letting me speak. I'm signing off.
Thank you, Anne. Gabrielle.
Hi, thank you so much. Gabrielle sends a, uh, no, no, Great Barrington. Yeah. I think that, that point of like, are people really listening to each other? There is so much interrupting happening. And that to me indicates a great lack of respect for other members on the board, and that's very troubling to me. Um, I feel like. And then other people who've spoken is like, why do you suppose other towns have actually sent or set limits to short term rentals? To defeat what Airbnb has done to cities and towns all over the world. This is not unique to Great Barrington. Also, note, no one is saying, let's ban Airbnbs in Great Barrington. No one has said that. Although there are some saying that that's what's been said, but that's not what's being said. So really, like before speaking up, it's really important that everyone. So really like before speaking up, it's really important that everyone takes a rest, takes a breath and reads these things carefully, listens carefully. And with all the interjecting and interrupting that was happening tonight, that could hardly be done. No one could really hear what was being said, what was trying to be pointed out. This is very discouraging. And so then of course, yes, emotions are just totally ramped up. I'd like to point out that um, let's see. Uh, yeah, the idea of taxing the activity heavily, that could be a great idea. Regulate the short-term rental activities so that their safety and unity in the community is important. Making sure that those who are doing short-term rentals are up to code and registered and paying the extra taxes, whatever it is. Right? So they're like, there are ways to do this. The big, big thing is, and, and we don't have concrete numbers from this, as far as we can tell so far, I'm not quite sure, maybe Lee can verify this, but it seems that there are not particular detailed numbers on the number of commercial investors that have come in, bought property and kicked people out of their homes. Renovations, evictions, that kind of thing for the purpose of short-term rentals. We, we don't really know that for sure how many that is. That's a factor. I don't know the numbers here, but in other cities and towns around the world, it's a big deal. So let's not pretend that that's not happening here. There are real-life stories, our neighbors who have been kicked out of homes because of the rise in prices because of investors saying, hey, we want this house, we're gonna pay any number. We're gonna come in and buy the house. We don't care. We won't even bother getting inspected, blah, blah, blah. We don't care. So like we're not, don't deny that that's happening, please. It's really important. And then there is one more, uh, one more piece I wanted to say.
Briefly, please, your time is almost up.
Yep. Um, ah. I, I can't, I can't get it. Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Peter?
Hi, Peter Frank, sixteen Lakeview Road, Great Barrington. Yeah, I wish that there was a bit of compromise and productive dialogue around this issue. What I've seen is this issue, I've been following it from the very beginning and I've seen that no listening on behalf of the board who have supported this project to the absolute, you know, avalanche of negative feedback that I've heard in all of these meetings to, and concerns about the health of this community that this bill is gonna do. And I've heard, you know, and there's been no compromise, no reaction to the feedback that you've been getting. So yeah, I'd like to see some, some compromise and some solid discussion on this. I feel like this is being rammed down the town's, uh, you know, property owners throats. I guess what I would like to say is, having been a longtime resident here, I'd like to, you know, think back maybe five years ago to what downtown Great Barrington looked like. There were empty storefronts all over town. There were hardly, there were just a massive amount of empty spaces. We've seen forty-seven railroad come in that, that brought in, you know, a new look for downtown, you know, and and then COVID came and, and what I'm seeing, and then that helped a lot or encouraged a lot of people from the city come up. And what I see right now is the downtown booming. I'm not upset about seeing the diversity of people who support all the businesses downtown. There's not one single storefront that is, that is open now, you know, that is vacant. Every, every storefront is being occupied. And I think a big economic driver is, is the people who come up from short-term. And I'm not afraid of the, the cultural impact that, that people from outside come. I think there's a xenophobia on the part of the board to say, gosh, I don't want people from outside coming. And that they try and limit it. And then what's gonna happen is we're gonna go back because the money that supports all these stores like, you know, the Osterlin, the bookstore, Moon Cloud, all of these very interesting and vibrant places are gonna close because you can't support it by, you know, closing the borders. And I feel like it's a, it's a, it's a cultural issue and, um, and you, I feel like it's, there's no data supporting this. The last thing I'll say is, I just, I just feel like it's a, this proposal is a lot like what I see in politics today. It's all bluster. There's no, there is no factual basis for the fact that this thing is going to increase, you know, affordable housing. It's not. And, you know, you've got Bentley, you've got, you know, and then I had to sit through this meeting last week of this select board where you guys were going over the proposals or the, the RFP for the school up in Dusetonic. Did you even, if you were serious about housing, would you possibly have included maybe one sentence in the RFP saying, this town would really appreciate some affordable housing and that any developer who comes forward with a proposal for affordable housing will be, you know, welcomed and greeted? No, you didn't even think about that being a possibility. Now, I know the economics of that place is, is absurd, but it's about and not very, it's a tough situation, I'll grant it. But, you know, there was no.
Could you wrap it up, please? Your time is over.
Uh, yes, fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Ruderman?
Thank you. I appreciate.
Apologize. I lowered your hand by mistake. I was gonna recognize you, but thank you for raising it again.
Thank you. It got me so confused. I can't even tell you. I was like, oh no, is it one of those moments again?
It was totally my fault.
Well, blame you forever and I'll never hold it against you though. My name is Dan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I live up at Four Knob Hill Road in Great Barrington. I did not grow up here or go to school here, but my kids did. I've been here for quite a while and I like it. I like this town. I like it that it's a small town. I like it that it's a small town that attracts tourists. I like it that I can get old postcards and new postcards and I like them both. What I don't want to see is this town being picture perfect, postcard perfect, town full of people and none of them go to school here. None of the kids go to school, none of the dads volunteer on the football fields. None of the people actually live here. They're all just visitors for very short terms. I, I've heard some of the data points. I don't think it's possible to ever have all the facts before you come up with any kind of a regulation. I think that's kind of crazy. I don't know how many blood vessels I have, but I know that when I'm bleeding, I want to stop it. And I know I don't need to know the number before I stop that bleeding. If there's fifth, two hundred houses that are short-term rentals and fifty-six are owned by investors, that's like having an inn or two inns on every street. Are we gonna put out signs on those? It's the Castle Hill Inn. It's the East Street Bed and Breakfast. It's the Gilmore Street motel. Like we, we have short-term rentals. We have all these unregulated, unzoned. Basically that makes them illegal rentals happening here. We're just saying, what I've read, the proposal that Lee put forward, I read the one that the planning board put forward. She's saying, let's put in a regulation that says that people that live here can rent out their homes sometimes and make a little money and bring in tourists. We all love the business. We all love the tourist business. We love the rental income it brings in. But let's not make it that out-of-towners want to do it, can afford to pay a higher price for a house to turn it into a short-term rental property. It's not good for a community and we're allowed to say that it's not good. We're allowed to say, we want to be a community that still supports families, it supports people that rent and can't afford to own. And I'll wrap up. We can afford to say those things that that's what we want, like that's what we're talking about. What do we want our community to be? How do we want it to go? And I think that the bylaw that, that Lee wrote, that you guys looked at is a good one to bring to the town and I'd love to see it be brought to the town and voted on. And that's the end.
Thank you, Dan. Ron Blumenthal?
Um, hi. Unmuted, yes. Okay, so.
Just say name and address, Ron, for the record.
One Blumenthal, Evil Corporation, East Street, Deconic Ave, Main Street, Grant Lane, Castle Street. So now all my cards are on the table. I'm all over the place. But right now I'm talking to you in my car. How about that? Twenty-five years ago, when I came in here, I was one of those terrible out-of-town people buying houses for quote profit. And I'm gonna tell you what that profit is. It's five to seven percent. None of them are Airbnbs, but I don't want to be constrained by regulation from not doing that in the future. As Michelle said, I want to keep my options open. I'm also not someone with quote deep pockets, unquote, very highly leveraged. And that's the nature of real estate. You know, you take a lot of chances and the rewards that you quote, unquote reap are sometimes questionable, but I don't think this is gonna go away Airbnb. We're not Somerville though, we're not Berlin, we're not New York City, we're not East Hampton or Cape Cod. So we're not gonna have the kind of crazy density issues that they have. There are already, I know some questionable Airbnb behavior around here. Let's get that cleared up. But what I'd like to offer you is a, 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 a small solution, a middle ground, which is licensing. Limit it by license and make some, make those licenses something that we have to sell that have to be renewed every three to five years. So if there's enough financial incentive to Airbnb, those licenses, just like old-time taxi cab medallions. And those licenses can trade in between people who want Airbnb and if they're limited to either what we have now or X percentage more of what we have, you will retain enough long-term housing that the Airbnb will not turn us into Barcelona. And then the other thing I want to say, and I will close with this, and I'm sorry, I'm not a great public speaker, but the thing I will close with is if we want more housing here, and this was said at the planning board meeting last week. If we want more housing, let's make more housing. So having built those nine units of housing that are rented to long-term tenants here, I can tell you it is difficult to build housing here, multi-family housing. So there was a proposal made at the planning board meeting last week to put a moratorium on special permits. Come, let's come up as a town with good solutions to build more housing rather than a punitive bylaw and a difficult building environment. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron. So we'll go to slot board. Now Garfield, you've had your hand up. Before we start, we've had seven panelists tonight and forty-two attendees, total of forty-nine. Garfield, go right ahead.
I just wanted to say when Trevor said we're putting up a banner that says we're keeping people, I think we need to put up a banner that says we want to keep the people that live here, have been here, spent their money, their livelihood and want to stay here and the seniors. We want to put up a banner says we'd like to keep those people here. There's some concern and I feel it as well. I've been here forty-three years. I saw the town, what it was like when I first got here and enjoyed it much more than, truthfully than I do now. I, I think we've gotten a little fast for our britches, if I may say so. I think we're moving away from a small town. I don't have a problem with progress, but I think we need to slow our roll. I think we need to be able to have people who want to stay here, live here. This is Lee's proposal. It's just one fa- fathom of this, of the whole thing of getting more affordable housing and people to stay here, et cetera. That's just one unit. It's just not everything. So let's not get crazy and think, oh, this is the only thing. It's not punitive. Like Dan Rudeman said, and he said, we don't want to see our town come to where it looks like Barcelona or we're gonna be turning into a town that is what sleeps out in the winters, I guess. You know what I'm trying to say is that we don't want, I, I don't want a bedroom community, I guess.
Thank you, Garfield. Eric, do you want to say anything?
I am all set, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ed? Nothing, thank you. Lee?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. Media time? Well, I'm gonna allow Leo Stemp. I don't think you're with the media, but go ahead. Just unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we were, we were done since, but I'll let you speak, say, name and address.
So Leo Stemp, one forty-three Hurlberg. I'm sorry, I had my hand up before. I don't know how it came down.
That's okay. Go ahead. You'll be the last speaker.
Okay, I also joined the meeting late. I apologize if I say something that was discussed at the meeting. Just a quick question that I had emailed you earlier today, was the difference between the short-term rental ordinance proposed by the planning board versus the ordinance proposed by the uh, select board, was that resolved in terms of the, the regulation and, and licensing done by Massachusetts General Law?
Yeah, we didn't even get close to that yet.
Okay, does everybody on the select board appreciate the difference between the two proposals in that regard?
Yeah, Chris will bring it up at the next meeting. Hopefully we'll get farther than purpose.
Okay, so I, I would just like to echo some of the other speakers who, who mentioned that, you know, where everybody's for affordable housing. But there's really been no data presented at any of these meetings about whether the, what you're trying to do is going to achieve that aim. And I sent you and I sent Chris a whole list of questions in that regard. And these are questions that are very easy to answer. I mean, you can, you can tell, it's just, it's just gonna require a little bit of legwork. You can tell how many Airbnb, VRBO houses are for rent. You can tell how much, if you eliminate each of those houses, you know how much tax revenue you're getting from the short-term rentals. You can figure all that out. You can make an estimate of how much contractor revenue you're gonna lose. You can make an estimate of how much business revenue the town and all the merchants in town, the restaurants in town are gonna lose. And then you can see what the impact is gonna be on Great Barrington. If you, if you eliminate short-term rentals. And all I can, I just, I'll just finish to say that the original proposal from Lee Davis that I saw at the subcommittee meeting, which was the last subcommittee meeting was maybe, I don't know, three weeks ago or something like that, whenever it was. That, or that proposal has been revised by both the select board and the planning board, if you will. But the original proposal would in fact totally eliminate short-term housing in Great Barrington. There is no question about that. I don't know if you've done research on that or not, but it will definitely eliminate all short-term rental. I shouldn't say all, I should say the vast majority of short-term rental in Great Barrington. That's gonna have a, a huge impact, obviously, on taxes and it's gonna have an obviously huge impact on vacationers who come to town. And I, I just, you know, I'm seeing, I'm seeing this proposal come out of town government with no research behind it. And it's shocking to me, frankly. I, I don't know how something like this happens. But that's all I have to say. And I, I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate the labor everybody's putting into it. And everybody thinks that your goals, the of affordable housing, very laudable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I see no media hands up, so we are adjourned by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone.